Good evening. Welcome to the Rancho Cordova City Council meeting, February the 19th. And I ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Here.
Mayor McGarvey.
Here. Thank you. I ask the city clerk to announce the meeting video recording and playback schedules.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, February 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, February 22nd at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. We're going to have our regular pledge of allegiance, and I ask Mary to lead us in the pledge, and then after the pledge, have our invocation, and it'll be led by EJ and Keneke, both two students from St. John Vianney's Catholic school. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We recognize faith as an important part of our identity. We have chosen the following prayer to open tonight's city council meeting.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. God, the source of every good gift, you have called us together as servants to do your will. Grant us the light of your spirit to guide us in our responsibilities as a city council.
May we work together in harmony for the common good. May we listen to one another in a spirit of genuine respect. May we encourage and reverence one another's unique talents. May we use the gifts of the Holy Spirit in creative Christian leadership. May we approach our decision-making through discernment and prayer. May we respond effectively to the needs of the community in our care.
God of love, you give us the gifts of the Holy Spirit for the common good. May your blessings radiate from us to others in a new spirit of service. We ask this through Jesus Christ, the light of the world, amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Very good. Thank you very much. That was wonderful.
Mr. Mayor, I have to identify those two. They happen to be, I guess they're not students of mine, but I coached them in academic decathlon at St. John Vianney. They're both sixth graders, very smart kids, but typical of students at St. John Vianney. So really, you guys did a great job. Very proud of you. They are also both in student government, and I think that's why they were chosen to be here. They're both the Religious Affairs Officers within student government. So congratulations, good job, and we will see you on Thursday for your individual test practice of academic decathlon right on schedule. And maybe there'll be an extra reward, we'll see.
We hope that's not a threat.
But no pressure. Everybody has to do that. Everybody has to do it. The academic decathlon is under two weeks away, so it's a very big deal right now. Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you. The presentation, I ask Stacy Delaney for the presentation of the Community Enhancement Funds, and I guess the council will come down for the ones we have presenting today.
So, good evening. I'm Stacy Delaney, the Community Enhancement Analyst, and this evening we are presenting ceremonial checks to two organizations that were approved for funding through the city's Community Enhancement Fund. And the first check being presented this evening is for the It Takes a Lincoln Village Community Group, commonly referred to as ITLV, and this is for the design, construction, and installation of an entry monument for the Lincoln Village neighborhood. So the future monument location is going to be at the median on Rootier at Vanguard. And residents and active ITLV group members Fiza Mugal and Michael Dak are accepting the check for $20,000.
All right, on three. One, two, three. Thank you.
On Rootier, right across from the park.
At Vanguard?
Vanguard, I think it's.
Great. Congratulations.
We're working on a cycle track.
That's right, right at that place. Thank you.
And the second check this evening is for Folsom-Cordova Unified School District to fund several different projects benefiting students at Cordova High School. This includes improvements to the learning space within the library, new video and portable sound system equipment, a portable stage and camera for the theater program, a trailer and golf cart for the band, and enhancements to the football program. School Board Member Chris Clark and Principal Jared Hayden are accepting the check for $87,846.
All right, smile on three. One, two, three.
And that concludes tonight's check presentation.
Okay. On the presentations, 5.2, and Nicole and Cyas Ipar and Kenny Simpson. Kerry Simpson, excuse me, I'm not speaking very well tonight.
Good evening, council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. During the course of our activities, we come upon some difficult issues that we need some resolution on, and we often turn to some community members to help us with some of the resolutions. And tonight, we would like to take the opportunity to recognize three individuals who've been very active and helpful, serving as hearing officers for the city in helping the city to resolve some of the relatively code enforcement issues. And we wanted to provide this opportunity to thank them for their service, to thank them for their dedication, and also the great work they do in working with our staff. So I would like to invite Camille Dixon, Mary Nessel, and Chris Clark. And with that, I'll turn it over to our code enforcement manager, Kerry Simpson, to give you a little bit of a background about each individual.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I really appreciate all the hard work these folks do. We have three hearing officers. I'm going to talk a little bit about Camille first. So Camille, please join me up here, Camille Dixon. Camille has an emphasis on our cannabis cases. She works for the California State Insurance Commissioner Dave Jones in the community programs and policy initiatives. She's the Director of Cannabis Insurance Policy for the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program. So she has a lot of information about cannabis, obviously. She has a master's degree in taxation, I could have done with her when I did my taxes last week, and a JD. She is the recipient of 40 Under 40 Award from CSU East Bay in April of 2018, the recipient of Elite Women 2017 Award by the Insurance Business Magazine, and a recipient of Insurance Commissioners Award for Excellence and Team Goals Award. She's amazing, and we're so lucky to have Camille. I don't know if you would like to say a couple of words quickly, Camille?
I know that you have other things to do. I just wanted to say thank you so much for your time and allowing me to serve.
Thank you. So we will move on to the two hearing officers that deal with more neighborhood nuisances. So Christopher Clark, if you'd like to come up. Chris, who has already been up to get a big check, I'm not giving you any money tonight.
Darn it.
Chris has been appointed to several city and county board positions, including serving as the chairman of the South Sacramento Citizens Planning Advisory Council and the Sacramento Neighborhood Accountability Board for the City of Sacramento Parks and Recreation Advisory Council, and the Meadowview Neighborhood Betterment Committee. He's a graduate of Leadership Rancho Cordova Class VII, and is very active in the Rancho Cordova business community by previously serving on the Board of Directors for the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, as well as serving as the president of the Cordova High PTSA for two years. He is currently the member of Board of Education for the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. He takes great pride in his occupation as the Resource Development Manager and Volunteer Coordinator for the Folsom-Cordova Community Partnership. So thank you, Chris.
Thank you so much, Mayor, City Council. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve as a hearing officer. I think, you know, as community members, we need to take pride in our businesses and our neighborhoods, so that's why I'm here, and it's just an honor to serve with you guys. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Mary, come on down. So Mary also deals with neighborhood and community nuisances. Mary moved to Rancho Cordova in 2003 as a direct result of discovering the American River Parkway, one of our hidden jewels. She found a fixer-upper home that borders Riverbend Park, which turned to be an absolute ideal location for her. She has a dog, and she loves walking and swimming in the river. She's been doing a lot of volunteer work. She started out as one of the Vins, and then started to attend city council meetings when time allowed. She was very helpful as we wrote our Neighborhood Nuisance Ordinance, our Property Maintenance Code, and she loves living in Cordova Meadow, and I am so happy that she has volunteered for us as a hearing officer because she's so invested in our community, so thank you, Mary.
And I just want to thank you all as well. I know you all invest a lot of your personal time in the city, and it's just a tiny bit that I can do as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, if I may, if we could give us a chance to take a picture with our hearing officers for a minute, and I hope Russell's still around. Elizabeth, if you could just take us a picture.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Remind Christmas not to borrow a cell phone.
No more money. We don't pay you for this.
Anywhere you fit in.
We'll do a couple of these. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Of course. Of course, thank you. Thank you.
I'd say a master's degree in taxation, that is not near the top of my to-do list. It was very interesting nonetheless.
Yeah, I think it was kind of a...
Lawyers describe that as learning how to do backflips in a closet. Some lawyers describe skill in tax law as learning to do backflips in a closet. Tight constraints, but lots of creativity, actually.
Is that them, or is that the people making the law, the going backflips on it? Okay, number six, public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items of agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less, and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comments?
I do not have any public speaker cards.
Okay, is anyone in the audience that didn't put in the card would like to speak? Everybody being quiet. So, public comment is closed. Council reports. Donald.
Let me bring up my calendar here. That went so fast, I forgot to look back at all of the stuff I've been doing. So the first thing I'll report is, I attended what is now seeming to be coming about four times a year, the Lower American River Conservancy Commission, or Board, or Committee, or whatever we're calling it. And the nice thing was, is we actually had money to spend this time, which was kind of cool. It was a tad bit frustrating, because there was about $2.5 million to give an advisory to, and there were four proposals. One of them was Soilborne Farms. Another one was like $170,000 for Camp Pollock. There was like 800 grand for, or no, about $1 million to fix up picnic tables in Discovery Park. The Soilborne one was about $800,000, $850 or so to do a parking lot. And then the other one was at $2 million or so, I think it was a little bit more than that, to acquire some land along the American River Park, somewhere in the city of Sacramento, I can't remember off the top of my head exactly where it was, it was on the south side of the river, maybe kind of by UC Davis Med Center, along that area somewhere. Oh, no, no, it was actually by, just south of the bridge over to Cal Expo. So kind of over there, they were trying to pick up some land.
In the vicinity of the park, Sutter's Landing.
Yeah, yeah, I think right around there. But that would have eaten up nearly all of the money. And Donna Tolle actually had the better idea, because I was just trying to get some money for Soilborne, so there was a little remainder that I was trying to get, and between him and I, we actually upped that to about a half a million for the Soilborne allocation, which is great, because by July, there should be another out there, if the governor's budget goes through the way it's been proposed, there should be about $8 million for us to spend sometime in July. So Soilborne should be funded fully, because it's the only one that was partially funded.
Where's the money coming from?
I believe the 2.5, there would have been a lot more money for, if the water bond had passed, the last one that didn't pass, but I think the initial allocation was last year's budget, and then the governor's budget, it may not be, maybe it was like 7.8 million, but they'll have to do another RFP. It's sounding like Cyrus and Albert, if he's still in the room, sounding like there's going to be an RFP released in April for that next round. And if you look at it, I mean, there were four proposals, they were all the county. The city of SAC was very, very pushy with this one, and trying to get the whole $2 million for this, to acquire this part, to add to the Parkway, and some of it was already planned. To me, it seemed more like it was just kind of money that came from heaven, and they were probably going to buy it themselves anyways, and then all of a sudden, oh, here's a grant. It's not that simple, but they had been pretty far down the path of negotiating with two sellers. One is an old, like landfill area from a company that's going to be capped, and they're going to use it, and then the other one is basically for sale right now, and could be a motel or something else if the city, if the Parkway doesn't get their hands on it soon. All very good projects, I think, in one way or another, but just a heads up, there's probably going to be significantly more resources by this summer. And again, this is just an advisory committee, ultimately the Wildlife Commission, I think is the name of it, or Board, is the one that actually decides how much is going to get spent, but for the most part, these resources are usually, the recommendations by the local conservancies are usually the ones that they follow. So more to come on that, but it looked very good, because ultimately Soilborne was third out of four in the ranking from staff, and we were able to get them the second most amount of money. Yeah. I've been traveling a lot for work, so I haven't gotten to a lot more other things, so I think I'll just leave it with that.
And my report is also quite short. Just to let everybody know that our Public Works Department is diligently working with regional transit to try to resurrect some public transportation service out of this thing that they're calling Sacramento RT Forward, which for Rancho Cordova is more like RT We've got one, they're giving us one bus, one bus route. We currently have two, and parts of two more. So one complete bus route, 74 is going away, one complete bus route, 28 is going away. We're going to have a newly restructured Bus 75, which will actually connect not just the VA and Mather Veterans Village, but also Sutter Connect and OES, and then it will go up one of the streets along Data and pick up all of the apartments in there where there's a lot of people who could ride the bus, and it will connect to Mill Station, which is all fine and dandy, but, and actually that one then, actually, once it connects to Mill Station, if I got what Albert and Mark told me correctly today, it then goes down to the library, so the library keeps the service that the friends of the library fought for, and then it connects down to Butterfield. But, you know, you can draw on one hand what they're proposing as a bus route for Rancho Cordova. They are also proposing microtransit for our neighborhoods north of Folsom Boulevard, which is, has potential or not, depending on how you perceive that particular project. And of course, it is a pilot project, as they're doing in Citrus Heights, Orangevale, Folsom, and parts of South Sacramento. But there will also not be any bus service along Folsom Boulevard. It will not serve the Sunrise Station, which was, of course, was part of the original intent in light rail, that the buses would be kind of feeder routes to our light rail stations. So there will be no bus service between Sunrise and pretty much Matherfield Road along Folsom Boulevard. And when if you consider, you know, if you consider the projects that we have on Folsom Boulevard, or on the feeder streets like Mills Park Drive, or Olson, places like that that could really, really use bus service, that's kind of what we're up against. Albert came up with some amazing statistics today that, Dave, will not surprise you when you think back to the Transit Equity Study that Dr. Scott did 15 years ago. We continue to subsidize bus service in downtown Sacramento on a per capita basis. Numbers, I'm sure our former masters in tax would agree, numbers don't lie necessarily, and these numbers show without a doubt that we're continuing to subsidize bus service in downtown Sacramento. So that's what we're going to be dealing with in the next couple of weeks. And I encourage everyone, if there's anybody out there listening who rides the bus, or has ridden the bus, or wants to ride the bus in Rancho Cordova, they should certainly communicate that to the SMUD general manager, Henry Lee, and to the Board of Directors. I'm sorry, you're right, not SMUD, Regional Transit. And email addresses at RT are really simple. It's like henry@sacrt.com. I think it's dot com.
I think so.
Yeah.
So 12 years ago, that Transit Equity Study showed about a $20, $25 million transfer between the unincorporated county and downtown Sacramento in terms of bus service, just to give you an idea. So in other words, taxes collected all over the county largely were going from unincorporated Sacramento County to downtown Sacramento to provide more service. That was the general transfer that was happening. Everybody else was close to balanced. We were a little negative, Citrus Heights was a little more negative, I think Elk Grove at the time was a little positive, but the huge imbalance was unincorporated to downtown SAC.
Well, you know, it's actually become a little more complicated, because, you know, ever since we incorporated, we have been the only new city required to be a, to be a member of regional transit. And so the historic members around here, for the last 15 years, have been the city of Sacramento, the county of Sacramento, and Rancho Cordova. So now, you know, a couple of months ago, Citrus Heights agreed to join regional transit, and then Elk Grove agreed to join regional transit, and now Folsom has just agreed to join. But even when you take the numbers that change because of the federal and the state TDA or Transportation Development Act money, even when you factor that in, because Elk Grove is contributing a very large amount of money, but they also have a very large population, and any way you look at it, it still comes out on a per capita basis that Rancho Cordova is subsidizing downtown Sacramento.
Hold on just a minute, Garrett.
Yeah, I just had one quick thing that you'll see on here, that on March 13th, we are holding our, I believe, Fourth Annual St. Baldur's Event, where Garrett is going to shave his head too, along with me and a lot of other people. So, and this year, it's going to be held at Old Republic, I just wanted to let people know. It's about a month away, you can go online and give now, and you can sign on, you can sign up now, and thanks to staff and everybody else who helped put that together.
All right.
And we're in a big competition with Old Republic's other brewery in Nevada City to see who can raise more money. So it's us against Nevada City now.
All right. Thanks for volunteering, Garrett. Go ahead.
So great being the youngest member here. That was messed up, I apologize for that. So, great meeting with the, we had two meetings with a couple of the business owners in their region, and they're very excited about the new hire, and I'm sure Sasha will have a big surprise for everybody about that, but they're very excited about the new people coming. Went to Rotary Crab Feed, there's a ton of crab there, got into a bidding war with David's wife over cakes, always entertaining, and then got called Garrett Gobwood by his son. I know that cracked you up, that was funny.
I'm still laughing.
You know, at least I wasn't orange this time. STA Governing Board, I was at the meeting, and then we elected two new leaderships, and then they decided to get in an hour conversation about whether we could go to the SAICOG meeting that was after it, and so then I had to leave, and luckily Albert was there, and we were just like, why are we still arguing about procedure, we could just go to the meeting? But, so they have a lot of things, a lot of good things in the future planned, and hopefully we can all partner. I'm going for $10 million for them, and I'm really looking forward to all that money coming back to Rancho. I had a ribbon cutting, it was really touching, for the VA Regional Benefits Office that's now relocated, it's funny, because they call it the Oakland VA Regional Benefits Office, and yet it's based in Rancho Cordova, so I was like, we should drop the Oakland, because you're confusing everybody, and call it the Rancho Cordova VA Regional Benefit Center. But it was an amazing building, they were all impressed, they were all bragging on each other. Got to see this man over here do a great speech, because he's always willing to make them all crack up, and I'm just, it's just great to see more and more business moving into our region. Just, it's amazing. I was at the Smile Dentistry Group, and I found out that they actually donated $1 million of teeth work to poor and immigrant families in Rancho Cordova. So they put, what are the fake teeth, in and took care of people's teeth from other countries, and anytime a business willing to do that, they always get a mention, because that's just touching when you're willing to help other citizens. Gals on a Mission is a group that's doing a lot of outreach work, I went to that nonprofit. I got to introduce the Cub Scouts of Rancho Cordova to city council, so they're officially warped, and they'll be ready to go, had them here. Found out, they hit some button, and then the police showed up, so I apologize for that, Cyrus, in advance. Stacy probably didn't know about that, but now you do, so that'll be an extra charge in the mail. Quanis Club, got to see them, it was cool kicking out with them. Rancho Cordova Chamber Breakfast, always good to see all the business owners there. Also Rancho Cordova Chamber Luncheon at Oz, always delicious. Let's see, Mather, got to go to the Mather Sports Center, new basketball court release, has Kings on it, so that means that everyone needs to be a Kings fan in the city of Rancho, because we have a Kings, and they officially dubbed that, and hopefully David will be working on the basketball group.
Some of their biggest... Some of their biggest advertisers are here in Rancho Cordova, because you obviously were all pizza guys.
Exactly. Yes. Library, went to the library budget meeting. So, this is kind of weird. So, we are pulling $6.9 million out of a fund, one of our rainy day funds, to help start working on, you know, fixing roofs and stuff. And they had to, and then they had an increase in, you know, retirements and stuff like that that they had to do. So, now they're considering how they're going to have to lay people off, and they're thinking about digital librarians, to where they would have screens that you would pull up to, and that would be the librarian's face at the place, so they could have multiple librarians in at one time, and I guess they're doing it in some other cities. And I was like, that's, so you're going to get rid of the live person? And they're like, yeah, with a computer. And I was like, you should love that, because your computer guy has like, I don't know, I don't really, I kind of like having a live librarian. But, so that's what they're considering. And then, so, just last but not least, and David and I are always going to say this because we're the basketball coaches, Rancho Cordova solidly thumped the Elk Grove team by 69 points. I tried to slow it down, but my center started dribbling the ball up, so great job Sunrise Elementary. Last game of the season championship will be, we've dubbed it the Rancho Cordova Classic, and it's Rancho Cordova versus the other top team, which is the McGarvey Elementary. So, those two are going at it, so you may need to be there for it. Just saying, it's next Thursday at 3:45. The two teams are going at it for the Sunrise Cup. And so, we've bought the cup and stuff, the Sunrise Cup, because it's the Rancho Cordova Classic, and you've got to have that cup. So, and that's it.
Thank you, I think. David.
Well, Cyrus, your basketball apology tour is going to have to continue. We offended people in Roseville, and West Sacramento, and Elk Grove, Carmichael, downtown SAC, Folsom. But the good thing is, the season's over, and the really great thing is, we won the championship, so, all the...
Two champs. We should have all them come up here, all the basketball groups.
That'd be cool, yeah. Carry the trophies in.
Yeah.
So, I guess your diplomacy can end at some point now. We've injured all the neighboring jurisdictions. Okay, so, that's taken up an enormous amount of time with basketball tournaments, but great, great ending, and it certainly has motivated me to think about how to get more kids in Rancho Cordova involved in youth basketball, because there's a ton of energy out there in the community around it. I also attended the Rotary Crab Feed, laughed heartily when my son mispronounced Garrett's name. I did not pay him to do that. It was just, apparently it was a handwriting issue.
So far, it's been orange. Got it on the screen, and now Garrett Gobblewood.
Apparently, it's a handwriting issue. He was struggling with it, just couldn't figure it out.
I was bidding.
I don't know why I didn't get that on video. Maybe my wife did. I need to check on that. But in any case, Rotary Crab Feed was awesome, and Garrett did cost me some money because he ran up the bid on my wife's, you know, dessert purchase. So, yeah, that was, that was well played. I was attended, or actually, I was involved in some National Civic League activities, the most interesting of which, for our purposes, I'm a past chair of the National Civic League Board, and I'm about to age off of it. I think after 10 years, you get the boot. But they are rebooting the Civic Index in honor of their, gosh, what is, 120th anniversary this year? We are also likely to be an applicant, as I understand, for All America City Award, at least we're exploring that possibility. But the Civic Index, they are making a more useful tool for city councils to evaluate sort of the civic health of your community. Before, it's been almost like a 20-question, you know, list, that you sort of go down and say yes or no, and they're going to make it more two-dimensional, and allow citizen groups, and design it in a way that citizen groups can do it independently of, you know, city staff being there saying, fill this out. And it's designed as an instrument to sort of measure, how healthy are you as a community? You know, yes, you were All America City 10 years ago, but, you know, how healthy are you now? And they're even considering a certification process. You know, if you gather enough of these surveys from different strata of your community, sort of process it through them, I don't think there'd be a fee involved or anything, but they would just sort of say you are still, you know, an All America City and territory with a good, healthy civic structure. So, that's a very interesting development for me, and something I'll probably tell you more about in the future. I was a speaker at the Clean Air Partnership Luncheon last week, talking about Green Means Go. I think I've talked to you guys before about that initiative at SECOG, which is trying to help the Sacramento region meet the Air Resources Board target of a 19% greenhouse gas emission reduction over 2005 levels. That is billions of dollars over 20 years higher than the previous Air Resources Board target. So, we as a region, SECOG, are going to have to come up with additional resources, find new revenues, reallocate funds that are available to try to meet that extremely aggressive Air Resources Board target. And in the negotiations that led to that target, the Air Resources Board said they would support our region in some special allocations from the state legislature. So, that effort will be ongoing. We'll be using Assemblyman Cooley, to the greatest extent possible, trying to get additional dollars. I'm mentioning all of this in particular because the leading way, when you look at the models, to decrease greenhouse gases, which is decreasing vehicle miles traveled, is to invest in infill along old corridors. About 80%, roughly, if you were to guess, you know, what's the best mix of spending these new dollars to the region? You would want to stimulate that sort of infill activity, maybe 80% of the dollars, 10% encourage electric vehicles, and maybe 10% transit, something like that. But the bulk of it, 80% or so, is probably going to go for infill. And we will be in line for that, obviously, as will every other jurisdiction in the region, because we all have these old corridors. But that's potentially a nice boon for us on Folsom Boulevard. So, we need to keep the eye on the ball there.
So, is that Civic Lab about commercial car or revitalization a part of this effort?
Yeah.
Because we have people doing that.
Yes. So, Civic Lab is a SECOG effort in its second year, designed to get great ideas around challenging topics.
Right.
And that was the one we picked for this year.
Right.
With me as chair, it was, you know, I influenced that decision. It just so happens that fits in perfectly with Green Means Go, so that was another reason to do it.
Okay.
That's my report.
Thank you, David. Well, I went to the Rotary Crab Feed, like David did, and it was, I think it'll be very successful, as it usually is. I mean, you have some people that worked very hard on that to help. I mean, some of the things that they've been done is, they give the third graders dictionaries, and that in itself is actually much more helpful, I think, than people even think about. Because when you have kids that learn how to use the dictionary, and you learn their language, learn how to write a sentence, you know, there's so many things you can learn with that. So, the, and Rotary Club was really good. The food was as good as usual, and it was really good. On the, I went to a ribbon cutting and a reception for the VA Regional Benefits Satellite Office. That was in Oakland. Garrett was there, and thank you. They were very glad to be able to come here. They were extremely happy with the way things were set up for them. It was all new. It was all what they needed. It was big screens. It was space they needed. And they were glad to be here. There's 100 employees that went from there to here in Rancho Cordova. And it's a benefit, so they can go, the veterans can go there and learn a lot more, because they have much more information to pass on to the veterans, more than they could gather at the hospital. The hospital is very helpful to a point, but when your job is to know and to give the benefits to the veterans, and that's what they get there at the Satellite Office. So, I was really glad to see that, and the people were, as I said, glad to be there. So, it's really good on that. Let's see, the, one more thing, Kurt Hayden was welcomed to the State Assembly Floor by Assemblyman Ken Cooley, and presented a resolution for everything he did for Rancho Cordova, and welcome him, thank him for everything he did, and hope he has a very successful retirement on that. So, that was very good, too. I think it's what I've got right now. Everything else has been, pretty well been said already. And our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I was able to attend the regional business outlook a couple of weeks ago, and there was a discussion, I think, very similar to what we heard at our local business outlook, related to the outlook on the economy, that there possibly would be a slowdown, but not necessarily a recession. I was pleased to hear that Rancho Cordova was specifically mentioned in that setting as, and probably for the first time...
It's only taken us 15 years.
Was mentioned as a very healthy and active hub for both residential and business growth, and they're expecting that to continue and be even more robust in the coming years. I was also able to attend the League of California Cities, the City Managers Department. Great deal of discussions about the natural disasters and preparedness for the natural disasters that we've had, including the fires in both Southern and Northern California. So, we plan on having additional discussion at the local level to be sure that we are prepared if a disaster strikes. And also, a great deal of discussion about smart cities, and examples of what other cities have done to achieve that status and that role. And just wanted to inform the council that we plan on having a work session on April 1 at 4 o'clock, right before the regular council meeting, to talk about that, specifically to bring in a very well-respected and renowned consultant in that area to come to us and explain what it takes and what it means, and so we can have some in-depth discussion related to smart cities. And lastly, we wanted to inform the members of the community that our application period for Measure H grant, for the Community Enhancement Fund grant has opened. It opens on, it opened on February 15, and will close on March 15. So, just wanted to let you know that. The information is on the city's website, but we can, you can also contact city staff, Stacy Delaney and her team, to get any additional information that you may need for the application process. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Thank you, Cyrus. Going on to item number nine, the Consent Calendar Items. Consent Calendar Items consist of matters deemed routine and uncontroversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Is there anyone who wishes to pull an item?
Seeing none, I'll move approval of items 9.1 through 9.7.
Second.
All right. Have a motion, a second. Have a roll call, please.
And who was the second?
No, he was.
Yeah. Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Number 10, Consent Public Hearing Items. We have none. And public hearing items, we have none on that also. Clicking right along. Number 12, ask our city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Rancho Cordova Police Department update on red light program.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm Chris Pittman, Chief of Police. Tonight, if you recall, back in the fall, we had a work session regarding the police department, and I gave a high-level overview of our red light program we have here in the city, with a commitment of coming back after the new year and actually discussing in more depth what that program actually entails. I asked Assistant Chief of Police Jeff Sheldorf to actually come back and give this presentation review tonight, so we should be able to answer all your questions with that. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Chief Sheldorf.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity for me to present this to you tonight. I am not asking for you guys to make any decisions. This is informational. I'm open to any questions regarding this. It's going to be very data-driven. I wanted to, as part of the evaluation of programs for the police department in general, this is one of many to follow, programmatic evaluations of the effectiveness in policing. I think it's important to continually evaluate these things, not only to do things better, but to refine the things that we're doing, and maybe take away things that we think aren't effective. So, this is one of those programs that we decided to evaluate. Some of the things I'm going to talk about tonight, again, is going to be very data-driven and high-level. I wanted to talk about the history and why we are here, and before I forget, I want to introduce former Assistant Chief Mark Fontes. I brought him in for some institutional knowledge regarding this program, since he was here when it was implemented. And he currently is a retired Annuity, who actually reviews some of these, or a lot of the videos that come through in the red light ticket. So, I figured we can lean on him if you have any historical knowledge, but I can give you the data knowledge myself. I'm going to go over citation statistics very generally. I think it's good to kind of frame all of these different things as we go along, so it gives you a high-level picture of how I got to the analysis that we got to. I'll talk about some collision statistics in general, and then based on these four different areas that we analyzed, and then go into the effectiveness based on the data. So, a little bit of the history, I wanted to bring up the resolution that this council has passed, and when it was, to give you the historical knowledge of it, and bring to your attention the contract that was assigned. Currently, we have an extension through Redflex, who is the corporation that runs a program for us on the backend, the computer, the hardware installation, and that sort of thing. We depend on them to do that sort of stuff. The first live location was implemented January 23 of 2013, and the final one was August 31 of 2015. So, with that, I wanted to identify the locations for you, where these different, we call them approaches. And I will go to mark with how we selected these particular intersections for our initial program.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Mark Fontes, as Lieutenant Sheldorf said, I was on this program back when we started, and I do have some historical knowledge. So, in 2008, as a result of some public surveys, we identified that there were some traffic issues and traffic concerns in the city of Rancho Cordova. So, we got together, and we spoke to the motor officers and the traffic enforcement officers that work for Rancho Cordova Police Department, and asked to identify what are some of the areas of concern. In addition to that, we used our vehicle accident data and enforcement areas where the motor officers would go out and enforce, and issued citations due to any traffic issue, wasn't necessarily just red light violations. So, we identified numerous locations. We contacted Redflex, and Redflex was chosen by the County of Sacramento through the RFP process. And I actually sat through some of these meetings and agreed with the selection, so we chose to go with Redflex as opposed to putting out an RFP and hearing the same information from all the vendors. So, Redflex did a survey for each of the locations that were identified, and they came up with a proprietary-type score and said that there was enough violations on here that could support the program, which could have a good effect on changing the driver behavior and increasing public safety. So, those locations were selected, and those are the four locations, those are four of the locations that are on the overhead right now. When we started these, we did go live. We made public announcements to Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, Rancho Cordova Police Department, as well as all the major media outlets in the Sacramento area. And before a citation was issued, we did run a 30-day, a minimum of a 30-day warning program to help notify the public that the cameras were here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I think it's important fundamentally to point out the fact that the intent of this program was public safety. I current, I mean, it is our job and our duty as, it's a police force for this area, to reduce crashes in this manner, and to look at the most effective way to do so. And just general police presence doesn't always fulfill that. Using automated sources to do some things that were not available to do is an effective way to accomplish our goal, which is, in fact, in effect, to reduce crashes within the city. So, that's another fundamental reason why I think it's important to bring that up. So that's another fundamental reason why I think it's important to bring that up. Real quickly, for those that know, a violation in the intersection is $500. I think overall, the public's perception is that that entire $500 comes to the city of Rancho Cordova. This slide will show you that it, in fact, does not. A large majority of this goes to other programs, other legislative things from the state, county programs, and that sort of thing that are built onto the ticket. So as you can see here, out of each $500 violation, the city of Rancho Cordova only receives 29% of that. I think it's also very important that, to point out, that that is not strict revenue that comes into the city coffers. There's staff time that this pays for, there's the equipment, there's the contract costs that all are taken out of that in the end, so it's not a money grab by the city by any means. So here, I'm going to get into the citation statistics for the four intersections that we spoke about, just to kind of give you a high-level view of the amount of citations that are issued per intersection. This is, since the implementation, you can see that Sunrise and Folsom and Sunrise-Columa don't have data going back to '13. Obviously, those were started in '15, so we don't have the data for that. Just wanted to give you an overall picture real quickly of what those, the amount of citations that we issue, and that is strict citations. That's not every time that the camera flashes, these are citations that we actually issue. I also wanted to point out the difference between the amount of pictures that are taken, essentially violations that occurred, compared to the amount of detection, or the amount of citations that are issued. So the blue line that you see is every time the flash goes off in the intersection, that is technically a detection where a car has passed the limit line, causing the automated system to go off. At that point, all of those detections are sent to Redflex down in Arizona. They do a broad review of each and every one of these detections. They take out a lot of the ones that are, that could have mechanical failures, or if the license plate is covered, those are initially taken out of the process. From the one, then it goes down to the captured violations, which comes to Mark and his partner, that review each and every one of the citations that are sent to the police. They'll go over, they look at the threshold, and if it does, if the violator is not going over 12 miles an hour during the red light phase, they will also, per their discretion, get rid of those as well. So I think it's very important to show that we are not just issuing a citation for letter of the law violations. These are the threshold egregious violations, 12 miles an hour during a solid red phase through each one of these intersections. If it doesn't meet that threshold, Mark and Jeff will also, through their discretion, release those as well. So the actual violation, this is very labor-intensive to watch all those videos, they're five to 10 seconds long, however, when you're doing thousands a year, that's a lot of labor. So out of that, they take out those, and that's where you get the green line. So you can see the large gap between the amount of detections versus the amount of actual violations versus tickets sent. I thought that was very important to point out, because we just fundamentally do not want to issue strict violations to every one of them. We wanted to be very, to change driving behavior, we wanted to actually issue the citations to the most egregious drivers. Also, for this, and I'll keep it here for a minute, in the data, in my analysis of the data, I found that it was important to bring to this council that only 8% of the drivers for the life of this program, from 2013 to 2018, have been repeat offenders. And what that tells me is that the driving behavior in general has changed, other than those 8%. But even out of that 8%, those could be rental cars, because it's license plate driven, not driver-driven. So if you have the same rental car going through the intersection with different drivers, you're going to have a quote-unquote "repeat offender," however, it may not be the same driver. So I think overall, that is a great number to show that the effectiveness of the program, specifically to these intersections. Also, I thought it was important to point out that during my research, I found that only 22% of the drivers that are issued violations are City of Rancho Cordova residents, which means 78% of the drivers that were issued citations are commuter traffic violators. Good information, I think, to look at the, to show that we are not targeting our citizens for this. Our overall goal is public safety in general. So I want to get into collisions real quick, and how this flow will all make sense. These are the collisions from 2012 until 2018. I wanted to give you a broad perspective of the collision rate within the city, year to year, through my analysis period, which is 2013 to 18. You'll see a pretty high spike in 2016, that was across the board in the city. It's very important to show you that this is citywide, this is every intersection in the city, the amount of collisions that have occurred. It's going to make more sense as we go through the next couple of slides to show how the citywide collisions compared to the collisions in this intersection. So we would expect to see on face value the same amount of collision increase year to year in these intersections if they weren't controlled, but you'll see in a minute that we don't.
How do we account for such a radical change in the number of collisions in two years?
There's a, you'll see in that there's a traffic flow portion of this, but there is actually about a 20% increase in traffic flow over that same five-year period, which can account for some of that. I can't, I'm looking into the 2016 spike to see what that anomaly was, because we went from, I think it was, we can go back, from 2015, just over 800 to close to 1,000, which that's, that was glaring to me in my research, and I'm looking into that to see what caused that. I don't know. I do know that for the Sunrise corridor in particular, I theorized, and I don't have any proof to this, but I theorized that all the construction on Hazel, when they closed those down to one lane, caused Sunrise to be a major artery, could have contributed to that. I don't know that to be factual, though. It's just theory. These are, I wanted to break it down per intersection, the controlled intersections, and this is raw data without taking into the increase in traffic flow. It's important to show that although we should theoretically see an increase in collisions based on the citywide data, other than Sunrise and Coloma, we're really not seeing that, even adjusted for traffic flow. Interesting on face value, but it'll make even more sense as we go along. Sunrise and Coloma, I don't know what caused that spike again in '18. I'm looking into that. Initially, when I started looking at the data, there was other issues other than red light that appeared to be distracted driving-related crashes, but I don't know that yet. I'm digging into those, that specific instance right now. So the traffic flow, to normalize the data, for the increase in traffic flow regarding the collision rate, we had to do that, and part of that analysis was looking at the flow. I only have Zinfandel and Olson and Zinfandel and White Rock here, because the other two, the Sunrise cameras, the Coloma and Sunrise, and Folsom and Sunrise, they weren't counting. Sunrise and Folsom wasn't counting until '17, and that was a software internal error that has been since fixed. All intersections are counting every day now. What that did for my analysis, however, was I was only able to normalize the data for the two Zinfandel approaches. I do have some preliminary data on Sunrise, on the Sunrise approaches, but it does, it wouldn't be a fair representation, because it's only two to three years' worth of data, and I'm not able to really see any trends in that. So when I took the flow data and normalized that with the collisions per these two intersections, this is what we found. And you can see, I had to go find, to normalize it per million cars, collisions per million cars, to get accurate data to evaluate whether these two approaches are working. And you can see an obvious trend line in Zinfandel and Olson that has trended down since 2013, and with some anomalies in there, a trend line down for Zinfandel and White Rock. And again, I want to point out the fact that this is contrary to the citywide increase that you saw in the collisions in general. So in the end, my analysis for these particular intersections is that it appears to be effective, and there could be other environmental issues that are involved in that, but I believe that the effectiveness is proven through the statistics in these two intersections. So I wanted to show you, because there's been discussions about, and I've heard some public comment, about the enforcement on right-hand turns on red. I wanted to show council and the public some of the close calls at these intersections and the reason why we have these. Again, going back to, we don't issue citations for every single one of these, just the most egregious ones, but the first few of these are close calls with pedestrians, and to demonstrate the reason why we want to continue with the right-hand turn on reds. Or actually, I'm sorry, the first few are vehicles, I believe, and then there's close calls with pedestrians, and then we actually have collisions. So this is about a two-minute video to demonstrate that. This is a right-hand turn where the pedestrian was not in the crosswalk, but another pedestrian near miss. so you'll see the patrol car turning left, so from the bottom of the screen to the left, and then he gets hit. So in conclusion, you know, I wanted to show that, those videos, I have hundreds of those clips, and these are actually taken from the approaches that we're talking about. Mark has collected these things over his course of doing his duties, and I will tell you, I have personally watched videos where people have done over 70 miles, up to 80 miles an hour through a red light. Fortunately, there wasn't a collision in those particular events, but had it had happened, it would have been catastrophic, obviously. At 80 miles an hour, there will be fatalities. So again, I want to emphasize that programmatically, the intent of this is for public safety. It's to, it is to reduce those types of incidents through change in driving behavior, awareness that we, we, meaning the police, can't always be out controlling these intersections at all times, and we need some automated systems to help us accomplish our mission, which is public safety in general. So going back to the effectiveness, I believe, based through my analysis, that collision rates have trended down and decreased at the Zinfandel and Olson, Zinfandel and White Rock. I don't have enough data to determine whether the Sunrise and Folsom and Sunrise-Columa approaches, based on the data, are effective, but I think that over time, we will be able to show that. And I'm not beyond evaluating one of those, if public safety isn't increasing, if the crashes aren't reducing in those intersections, I am not beyond moving those, reevaluate those, because my overarching goal is to accomplish our goal. We do have, contractually, we can have up to 10 approaches, so we do have some room to grow a little bit on this, if that's council's desire and direction, but I'm also not beyond moving some of these things if they're not effective in the intersection. So with that, thank you for your time, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. First, I'm going to ask our city clerk, we have any cards from anyone to ask?
I do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. Staff?
Excuse me.
Counsel?
So, I will, in full disclosure, admit I have gotten caught by one of these cameras, not in the city, and long before I was an elected official, but I have paid a ticket for this. I also did get a warning at Olson and Zinfandel once a long time ago, and learned that we don't, tickets don't say courtesy notice on them, so it didn't have an amount, but I will readily admit.
You can thank Mark for that. He probably sent that to you.
Yeah, so somebody looked at it, and our former chief of police explained to me that I was darned close, but they gave me the benefit of the doubt and just warned me. That being said, and again, personally, as a driver, I'm probably not a big fan of these things, especially because I've been caught, but I
That's the number-one reason people conflict.
Oh, I know, I know, and trust me, I've had so, this is probably one of the biggest things that constituents that know me well text me all the time or email me complaining about these, are because they get caught. It's frustrating. It's interesting that the choices that we have at the moment, and, you know, for somebody who lives in the south area now, I would be really interested in seeing consideration at Herodian and Sunrise, Douglas, or Douglas and Sunrise, I think both of those intersections. I know I've talked to Albert a lot about this, that really from, is it Bossfress is the further south? From there, all the way until you hit White Rock, the speeds along that part of Sunrise Boulevard, especially in the non-peak hours, are very, very dangerous. And even that turn of Herodian, if you're coming from, off of Herodian onto Sunrise Boulevard, turning right and going north, you can barely see, because of the way the hedges and the sidewalk angle up and everything. And the number of times I've seen people just blow right past it, because they're already going 75, and then they realize it's turning yellow, and there's no way they're going to stop in time, and they just go through it. Because it's interesting, I think the ones that we have, obviously, are the busiest, but I don't think we see, I mean, in the evenings, probably, after peak traffic is probably a little bit worse, but you know, there's just so many cars in those areas that for a lot of the day, you can't get going very fast, and I think it's more of the people that are just trying to get through the light, because they're trying to get back to Roseville or Oak Grove, or wherever they're going, or getting, or coming into work. But the speeds aren't nearly what they are, I think, in the south area, and then also Rootier, I think, I know we just talked about it a little bit, that we're going to do something with a cycle track, but even there might be, and I'm saying Rootier, and actually, I guess it's a stoplight at the moment, or no, a stop sign, but Rootier and, I can't think of, is it Rockingham, I guess?
Rockingham coming across freeway?
Yeah, that's on a light right now, before, yeah.
It's a stop sign.
Yeah, it's just a stop sign. Or even Rootier and Old Plasterville.
So I agree with you, there are many areas of the city that should be continually reevaluated. Of course, Anatolia wasn't built up as much as it was when we first started the program, so part of this analysis was to take a broader view of where else can we possibly deploy this, or if it's even appropriate. And that's my total intent, is to do so.
It would be interesting, because obviously, you're picking the busiest intersections that we have, and that makes complete sense, but some of them might be also to cross-reference the number of speeding tickets and the highest speeds that we see in town, which I think, if I'm a bet man, I'm going to guess it's in South Sunrise, in the south part of Sunrise in the city.
I agree, and Albert can attest to this, that we are working with Public Works as far as design and overall with our input. I think we've established a very good relationship to look at the overall environment in general in the engineering piece of this, and I agree, I would bet that Sunrise is probably the fastest.
Well, and I know, Albert, I don't mean to call on you, but I guess I will, although I don't know if you can answer this, I know that we had talked about at Bossfress, Justinian, and I know that we had talked about at Bossvers, Justinian, and Chrysanthemum, and even Herodian, about the delays between a red light and a green light? So once it hits red, that everyone waits for three seconds? I don't know if we, did, did we actually do that in some of those?
We have extended the, good evening, Albert Stricker, Public Works Director, and we have extended the gap between the green and red phases on several of those signals on the Sunrise corridor.
Okay, yeah, because a lot of them, I mean, you know, you just see people like, unless there's a car turning left into those neighborhoods, let's say going south, at Justinian and Chrysanthemum and some of the other ones, I mean, you'll just see people, they're not even, they're not even looking at lights as they're, because they're going that fast. And then all of a sudden, somebody's there to turn left and, you know, it's been green for 10 minutes, and now it's, it's gonna, it's gonna turn red in five seconds.
Yeah, well, we will definitely work together to evaluate those. Coloma's another thoroughfare that we're currently looking at to mitigate some of these things, and it boils down to light cycles and maybe timing different intersections differently, and we work closely together to accomplish that.
Yeah, because, because again, I, I totally get why you've picked, or why we picked the ones that we have, those are obviously the busiest. But some of the ones where people are just taking the most risks are in the areas that aren't as heavily populated. And, and that's also where a lot of people are trying to catch up on their commute home or to work.
Yeah, and those intersections also, it, it was intended to reduce gridlock too, which obviously is a huge issue.
Thank you.
Linda, you have any questions?
Well, only that, in terms of speed, Zinfandel between Douglas and International is number two. And it's, we don't have enough signal lights, that's part of the whole problem. There should have been one at the north leg of Baroque. And, so those, those are other things that need to be evaluated.
Thank you for that, we'll look at it.
Garrett, anything? David?
You know what I, what I dislike about these programs is the, people feel surprised, I think, at times by it. They shouldn't be, because I know, driving around now, you know, if you're using an app on a phone, most of them will even warn you, there's a red light camera ahead. I think my iPhone did that for me the other day. It feels, it feels arbitrary, I think, to people, it's kind of Donald mentioned, you know, why me? How did this happen? They're surprised by it. But what I like about it is the, the data. You know, we don't, we don't place these based on where we're going to get the most revenue, we place these based on where the most accidents are occurring, because this is a tool to try to stop the accidents. So as long as we continue down that path of trying to stop accidents and doing analysis like this, trying to figure out, is this actually working, I think we're on solid ground. I think there's a huge misnomer in the community that this is revenue, you know, massive amount of revenue for the city, which is not true. I think, you know, standard, Garrett and I were discussing it up here just before, but I think a standard, like speeding ticket, might be 100, 200, oh, $200 probably, or something like that. And we get like, $2 of it, right? I mean, it's just a pittance that actually, actually ends up coming back to the city for most traffic violations. So that's, that's not a reasonable motivation for it. But I've had a couple of interesting experiences with this. One, I paid, I paid one of these once in the county of Sacramento, when a truck, a truck was in front of me in turn, and as I'm making the left, following the truck, and it took him a while to get through the intersection, a train showed up, which made the light change its timing. So I had entered the intersection behind the truck, the truck was blocking the, the turn signals. By the time the truck cleared the turn signals, it was red, I was still in the intersection, proceeded out. And someone, not you guys, obviously, gave me a violation for that. And I just paid it without protest, I probably should have protested it, because it was a train, I was the second car, you know, truck went in, I went in, couldn't see because the truck was in front of me, then I get a red ticket. So as long as we're avoiding those sorts of situations, I'm, I'm comfortable. The other interesting one is, I, you know, like you, Donald, I've got a lot of residents who complain about these. And a lot of non-residents even who contact us and complain about these. And, and a couple of these, they've, they've actually sent me the citation, they said, here's my citation, like I can fix the ticket. I think people think we can do that, you know, there's no way we can do that. Just to make that completely clear, we cannot fix tickets. But this nice lady...
Let's make clear, no one that works at the city can do that.
Yeah, they don't do that.
Not just us.
This, this, this nice lady sent me the video, and she said, I know I stopped, I know I stopped, I stopped, I waited, I think a car went by, and then I made my right turn. And so she sent me the thing, and I just plugged it in, because you can watch the video of your own ticket on the, on the web, and she just rolled right through. I mean, when you watch the video, just rolled right through. So human memory, you know, is a little malleable on these things, particularly when it's a month later and $500 bill is, you know, attached to it. So, I don't know if there's a way to handle this in a nicer way, I think it's pretty reasonable, the way we handle it, but that, that could be a consideration.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that. We, we do have our desk phone on the instruction page, and it rings, probably one of the few phone numbers that actually rings on the desk that you're trying to call. And we respond to a lot of these, we get, the phone rings off the hook, so we respond to them. And, believe it or not, once in a while, a mistake is made, and if we can resolve it right there, we usually do, and we'll dismiss it in a case, let's take your case, for example, if we receive a phone call where somebody says, I couldn't see, the truck was in the way, we review it while they're on the phone, and if we determine, yes, you probably didn't see it, then we, usually we have to write a letter to the court, and we dismiss it, and it's submitted to the court. If not, sometimes there's, you know, people will call and say, it's not me driving, it's my brother, they provided us the information, and we change it right there. We issue a dismissal report to the court, it's our discretion if we reissue it, and it's resolved. So we do believe, you know, there's... Well, there's a sense of...
Well, and, and the one I paid, it was right after college, my car was still in my name, and my father got the, the ticket. And had, and called me, and, and, yeah, he ratted me out, so I did pay it.
It's very important to still say that, despite all of the automation and the discretion, the citizens still have due process. So, I want to make that very clear, that you still have your day in court. Whether we believe that that violation occurred, that doesn't take due process off the table, they can still go to court, they could still talk to the magistrate or the commissioner and plead their case, and it could very well be dismissed. But, due process is still there, I think it's important to say.
Just a question, when we, when you briefly began, you talked about 8% of the people who were in violation or something like that, was that correct? From what it used to be, it's improved since the red lights have come on?
Well, 8% of the violators are repeat offenders. So 92% of the violators never, never violate again. So it shows that there is a somewhat of a pattern of, you get one, and you're probably not going to do it again, which is accomplishes our goal of changing driving behavior. Because that person that, that got the ticket is probably less likely to go through that intersection the next time, accomplishing our mission of changing their driving behavior, which is essentially dangerous.
And then 77% are not residents?
78.
Okay, yeah, very good. That's the only questions I had on that, and I appreciate that very much, because it's going to help a lot. Another question, actually, I just thought about that, the, a $500, 158, I think it was, I haven't, I'm not looking at the numbers right now, but something like that, but of that 158, how much would go to the city? Because some of it goes to paying for the equipment, some of it goes to, you know, so how much of it actually goes to the city? Because people will think, you're making a lot of money on this.
Well, I can, I can give you fiscal year 1718's data, if, if that's what you want. I, it's $146.02 per ticket, I think is the number. Fiscal 1718, the total revenue to the city was just over $960,000. Of that, over, close to half a million, if not more, was paying the salaries of the retired annuants as I actually review it, and then the contractual cost. On top of that, there are other equipment costs that can mount, so we are cost neutral as far as that goes, maybe a little bit positive, but it's not, it's not a moneymaker for the city per se. There are a lot of things that the revenue actually has to pay for contractually and for staff.
All right, well, that's very good. Anyone else have any more questions on this? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. And actually, quarter, other than we get educated, so...
I, I forgot to actually mention something, I'm sorry, but I left you and the citizens with two IHS reports to kind of give you, I didn't want to get into the details of those reports too much, because they're very long, but it's good reading about some independent nonprofit analysis of red lights in general, for your reading pleasure later, but it kind of supports the analysis that we had here tonight, I forgot to mention that.
Very good. Again, thank you very much. Okay, going on to 12.2, I ask our city clerk to announce the subject, please.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract number 11-2019 with Conica Minolta Business Solutions in an amount not to exceed $608,459 for the implementation of the OnBase document management software and conversion from Sire. Hello, Mayor, City Council members and staff. I am Stacy Leitner, city clerk, and joining me for this presentation is Marie Weber, our assistant city clerk, and several members of our IT team. We have Eric Prosser, and we have David McCoy, and I believe Rod is also in the audience. We would like to provide you with, one, a status of the city's current software application used to manage records with the city's current electronic content management system, and manage the agenda management system. Two, we would like to talk with you tonight about the need to upgrade to a new software application. And third, staff's recommendation to upgrade to OnBase to manage city records existing and new.
Can we just vote yes?
Let us finish. At the March 5, 2018, City Council...
Oh.
Okay.
Keep going.
I'd like to hear a little more.
Yeah.
I thought you were kidding. At the March 5, 2018 council meeting, our IT department provided you with a technology update. As part of that update, it was shared that the city would be exploring and implementing new software as it relates to the electronic content management system and our council agenda management system. The city clerk's office is responsible for both of these systems. The city is currently using a software application purchased by Sire Technologies in 2011, which manages many of the records in the city clerk's office and finance. Given the advances in technology, as you are all aware, our current electronic content management system and agenda management system need to be replaced, as our existing software, Sire, has become acquired by Highland Software and its functionality is problematic. We are working to replace both of these systems this year to increase efficiency, functionality, and access to our records. The process that we are using is in front of you today, and today we are here to specifically discuss our recommendation for our electronic content management system, and I'm going to turn it over to Marie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I will go quickly. Adoption of the resolution approving the OnBase contract will allow staff to move the records from our existing content management system, Sire, to OnBase, add future records to the new system, and move away from the in-house support Sire requires and operate in OnBase's cloud-based platform. OnBase will not only bring the automation of document management practices, it will also improve efficiencies through workflow and integration. The OnBase system will improve functionality and access for both constituents and staff. Transitioning to the new software will empower constituents, residents will be able to access records in real time through the use of a public portal on the website, allow for future system enhancements. With a system this robust, future growth and integrations will be possible. Maximize staff efficiency. This contract includes the creation of workflows and auto-indexing tools that will save time and improve accuracy. Modernize records management practices. Improving our document management practices will reduce reliance on paper files, automate manual business processes, and realize operational efficiencies. Provide more mobile and timely communication. The mobile access module will grant employees tablet and phone access while being away from their desk. Increase speed. OnBase will significantly improve upon the lagging search and response times of Sire, improving efficiency with retrieving records. Streamline and automate processes. Creating processes through workflow and task-specific modules will simplify and expedite daily tasks. Future integration and agenda management software. OnBase software is very robust and has the capability and staff expertise to integrate with future systems such as Intergov, DocuSign, and most agenda management software systems. The implementation of the OnBase, OnBase software is a multi-year project. You can see the immediate schedule on the table displayed. Upon approval, staff will work with a vendor to establish the comprehensive project schedule. With that, we are happy to answer any questions.
Move approval.
I'm going to ask, do we have any cards for this?
We do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, so we, we actually have a motion in a second, but I do have a question. This is, aside from the ways in which you have outlined that it makes it easier for people to access public records, this really has, this has nothing to do with the way in which our council meetings show up on the website, or whether or not, whether or not these, these meetings can be livestreamed.
That is the agenda management software, and we are working on that as well.
Great. I, we get a lot of requests...
And we know.
For live streaming.
And we're here to help fix it.
Great.
Facebook.
I don't want to be on Facebook at City Council.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Budge, and a second from Terry, Donald Terry?
I know that.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye. Very excited about the new technology, keep pushing the edge, go a little bleeding, we like to see new tech come into Rancho. Good job, guys. And then you'll be able to scan your receipts soon, just so you know.
That's not this system. Kim would, Kim would be here if that was the, that system.
Thank you, David, that's helpful. Number 12, council have any requests for future agenda items?
Actually... This isn't a rush, but I would just like to, I'd like us to take a look at some of the ordinances that we've passed in the last handful of years and see how effective they have been. Kind of like we're talking about here with Red Flex. I'd really like to see if we can come up with some sort of data around what's happened from the business community and from the parks around, like, our smoking ordinances. Also, I know a handful of years ago, we passed a head ordinance, I'd like to see how many people actually signed up for a license for those types of things, and I don't know if there are other ones off the, those are the two off the top of my head that I think were my brainchild, so I'll bring those up. But, I think one thing that we, we need to try to focus a little bit more on, beyond just coming up with ideas and passing laws, is how effectively are we implementing them and enforcing them?
Performance measurement.
And, and hopefully repealing laws that no longer are relevant.
Sure. Same thing, yeah, if there, if there's something that we've done in the past that isn't working, or we never figured out how to enforce it, maybe we should just get rid of it. Yeah. So, and that could be, this could be months from now, but just wanted to bring it up.
I think it's a great idea, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it brings to mind the, no horse parking on Main Street.
No for what?
You can't tie up your horse on Main Street.
You can't have a donkey in a bathtub either in New York, I think. Isn't that still a law?
I'm not sure how the donkey can...
I don't think we have any other agenda items, Bobby.
Unless we don't have anything else, actually, we do. I'm going to adjourn the meeting to the closed session, and thank the audience for being here. You can hang around if you want, you know.